To have executive session move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we went in the, when we seek advice from legal counsel. So at this time, if you, if you wish to make a resubmission, go ahead and do so. But before we make any decision on a redecision, we're gonna be looking to hire a consultant, a fire protection engineer, who again is gonna be a neutral party. So they're not, you know, they're not being subsidized by the gas industry, by the propane industry, somebody that, you know, can, can look at it objectively, you know, and get some advice from them also.
Chairman, no objection to an objective, fair person from the outside.
Okay. Alright, so we'll, we'll look into somebody and we'll, before, prior to somebody being hired, yep, we'll-
Speak with counsel. I'm not sure if technically it's a resubmission, but whatever it is, we'll get you the information you need with regard to the-
Right, 'cause you're, you're looking to, you know, to make, you know, a change to the plan.
I think supplement, but whatever it is, we'll get it to you and then there, you know, counsel and I can figure out whatever legally it is and he'll tell you what he believes and, we, we wanna get a solution, we wanna address your concerns, and we thank you for your time tonight.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Alright. Onto the next item on the agenda here this evening. We have a conceptual review for BJ's Wholesale Club self-service fueling station.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Steve Vukas, I work with Bowler Engineering. And working on behalf of our developer, Mr. Peter Yeski with First Hartford Development. So we're excited to present this development project in the town of Wapanger. This project is located at 1146 US Route 9. It's approximately 600 feet north of the intersection with Smith Town Road. The project is situated in the Highway Business District and proposes a use of a gasoline filling station. Gasoline filling station is permitted through special use permit with the plan. The gasoline operation would contain six dispensers. Right in the middle of the site there. It would also contain a 400 square foot kiosk for an attendant in the middle of those six dispensers. There's no food preparation here, there's no sales of any kind other than possibly-
Club membership.
Club membership.
That's the only thing they can say.
Yeah. So it's pretty low impact for that portion of the development. We have access that's proposed via 24-foot wide access on the north end of the site. That would be both in and out, but it's a right-in, right-out only due to median that we have on US Route 9. That's a New York State DOT jurisdictional road, so we would be trying to attain approvals with them. We also have a one-way exit out, right out on the southern side of the site. The intention is to have the one-way flow through the dispensers, keep the, keep it efficient for all the vehicles that would be fueling up in that area. We have signage proposed, pylon sign in the front, canopy signage as well. So that's pretty much the overall summary of it. We, you can tell there's a lot of green space on the site. We have had a wetland scientist look at it and he noted that there is some wetlands located on the site. They're federal wetlands, we understand that you guys have your own code jurisdiction over that wetland. We wanna point out that one of them was in the front here. We're avoiding everything as much as we can by tucking this development in the northwest corner. We're over 100 feet away with our development from the wetlands that were located here. About that one in front, it's just this isolated pocket that the wetland scientist noted that it wasn't of real value, being that the site had been previously filled.
We actually found that, if I may, do you mind if I pass this hand? So this is from your town, I believe, to CHS website, where another wetland was located, so, in the front. And I picked up, we picked it up in our own assessment, obviously we wanna, we wanna be forthcoming with the board.
So it's just that, that small section in the back, I mean, I didn't check from, I didn't check before the meeting, but-
I thought there was like a little stream back there.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, is there any, did you check to see if there's a, it's within any flood area also?
I believe it's not.
Yeah.
I believe it's just outside the flood area, which is in the south.
Yep. Believe that is true.
Did you do any T test digs over there to see what the water table's like?
There's been a geotechnical report that's been done. As far as the groundwater level, I don't know off the top of my head, but for separation distances, for stormwater practices, we would maintain the separation that's needed by the state.
You do know that property's been flooded once, right? Twenty, fifteen, twenty years ago?
I was not aware of that.
No, I wasn't aware of that.
Okay.
Again, we've noted a lot of ledge on the site.
Yes.
That's the one, the primary issue, our geotechnical report came back and luckily the quality of the rock is, is poor, so mostly probably it looks like it'd be machine excavated, so I don't know.
Because the drainage that's on the building next door is very high and there's very minimal pitch in that area.
You're talking about cardio, sir?
No, the other side.
Oh, the other side, right.
Yeah. I think the plan would be to fill the site a bit, to maintain positive drainage.
Well, that hurt the properties next door?
We'd be in accordance with New York State DEC for quality and quantity measures with our stormwater practices that we would propose at this site. We wanna kinda get a feel from the board, feedback from you guys as far as the feeling about what we can do with the wetland buffer. Can stormwater go within that wetland buffer to the east of our development in there? That's one of the questions that we wanna have and developing near this one that's isolated on the south part of the site.
Because the drainage is on the front of that building next door to you and goes across the street to the property that's there.
You're saying it's-
Yeah, on the right side of that property.
The office building?
Yes. There's a drainage in front of that which goes to the stream that's across the street and that's what had caused that flood.
Okay, so it went this way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you talking about it goes under, goes over to the TEG?
Yeah, goes across the street.
Where the, where the TEG bank is now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Who's gotta look at stormwater stuff as a DEC?
No, we would look at it.
Engineer, our engineer would review it, but-
I mean, you're not really, you know, like at this point, I understand this is just like a concept, but, you know, you've got your proposed, proposed tree line that's pretty tight to the parking lot and doesn't account for any stormwater areas that you'd have to put in. That's quite a bit pavement impervious, so. And then you, so, so for the, for the wetland area to the south, then you would, you would be proposing that you would be applying for a wetland permit for encroachment within the buffer?
Yes.
If it's in fact a, a problem.
Well, if it's, if it was, if it was flagged by your consultant and it's, it's determined to be a federal wetland that meets you on the criteria, then, you know, it does, it does qualify as a wetland under our ordinance.
We have, I'm assuming that you got this from Dutchess County Parcel Access, we've had issues with it being outdated in the past.
But they've actually, but they've actually had it flagged by a wetland.
Yeah, we've had it served.
Yeah.
Yeah, and not wetland, we did our field walk, but obviously it was not the one designed-
Yeah, it was in the springtime.
But I think you're right, you know, the whole place is town.
Can you explain the traffic load a little bit, because it seems to me there'd be an immediate conflict, cars exiting from the south and trying to enter on the northern side of the property?
Yeah, I agree, yeah, it's kinda weird.
Yeah, they're trying to maintain this one-way flow through here, that's important to BJ's. They, they prefer to have a two-way access in the north and then cars would enter here and anyone who's pushing the fuel up goes through that and then out this way.
But it looks like somebody would wanna get off Route 9 to enter on the north side and somebody exiting from the south side-
Yeah, okay, just reverse that.
-there would be an immediate issue right there.
Just be a conflicting pattern there.
Yeah, it's almost like-
If you, if you put the pumps up on the top, on the north side of that property, then you come in the south side, out the north side. Because even people who are exiting Route 9 are gonna jump off onto the shoulder and if somebody's trying to exit on that south side, there's gonna be an immediate problem there.
One of the, you're saying is that's a newer site?
Yeah.
I don't know how to remedy it, but to me that doesn't work.
One of the reasons is, I mean, they will leverage on this deal and doing these, I know the tanker does have to unload on the passenger side, that's a, that's a law or requirement, don't ask me what the exact code is, but they, they basically unload a few off their passenger, passenger side of that, so when we look at the site, what we try to do is minimize the amount of time the tanker would have to make a movement on the site, basically we try to do one ice sweep, we obviously don't want the back and out. So that's, that's, I think that's on the ground.
So is the southerly, the southerly exit basically for the tanker?
The tanker actually-
Cause I mean, that would be his-
Not this way.
No.
So he could go, alright, so he can, he can maneuver the site, so the southerly access wouldn't be required then?
It's not needed for the tanker.
Not needed for tanker, but also for the vehicles too, it could be, right? You could do it all on one, you could do, you know, one entrance in, one entrance out.
Yeah, so is-
You have people coming in and, you know, they're gonna go to the pumps and then when they're done, they're gonna go, you know, off to the east to wrap around and then go up to the northern part of the property and exit out. Now, that would avoid the conflict that I think, that was just brought up with having, if you're coming out of, you have somebody coming out of the southerly exit and somebody trying to get into the northern exit, you know, and there's that, you know, the traveling, you know, because again, you know, Route 9, it's, I mean, it's really, you know, not a highway, but it is a highway type of thing. You get people-
And normally to exit right, you would pretty much get off to the shoulder and somebody exiting there, I would see a possible problem there.
We have to take that back, BJ's will take a little bit of that side.
Yeah.
So you've got 250 feet along the frontage, is that right? It's a little hard to read, but-
Uh, yes.
But it looks like you have a, on the southerly part there, on the southwestern part of the portion there, you have a wetland area, is that what, that's, that's forcing you to push it up to the north more?
Yes.
Right, and that's what our consultant told us.
Okay.
So they would need, they would need to have, they would need to obtain a wetlands permit for that wetland on the, for the wetland on the south, because they're gonna be within the buffer.
They'll be encro, they'll be encroaching into the buffer.
Right, you know, but the other thing is, I mean, so if I remember this site, so this site is relative, relatively flat, is that right?
Correct, yes.
So have you looked at, and I know it's very, very early, but very, very conceptually, how you might get storm drainage out of there, because what I'm, what I'm looking at is you'd have to put the treatment, treatment areas in the, you know, the rear, because you don't, because you don't have any room on the sides with, you know, the property line to the north and then the, and then the wetlands to the south. But then there's also county health department is gonna have separation requirements from where you're proposing the septic area in the back. They're gonna have separation requirements between the septic and any stormwater, you know, infiltration or bio-retention, whatever, you know, whatever you're gonna use. So, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm thinking that if you haven't really looked at that, I, I think that's something that you should look at. Cause it's kind of a long like run to get from the front, front to the back, right? You know, with drainage?
Yeah, it's, it's a long way. I think there is room for both items, for septic and storm, including the separation, depending on how perks go, but we wanna kinda get a feel for, can we put storm in the buffer, the wetland buffer, in the town?
Well, in the, well, in the back, so, so that's not a DEC wetland in the back, right?
That's correct.
So, uh, how much is our buffer, do I forget?
Hundred?
Hundred feet, no matter what the acreage of the wetland is, hundred feet, no matter what.
Hundred feet on all wetlands.
Okay. I don't know, I mean-
These, you know, these areas you have flagged, they don't show, that's not, that's just the wetland area itself and not including the buffer.
That's right, yeah, just this, this is the flagged area, the CED shaded, over there and there, and it doesn't include the buffer, the buffer is about 100 foot, I believe.
I mean, honestly, you, this is just, you know, my opinion that I think, I think for the board and also us to give you really any decent like feedback is to show, you know, the buffer on there so that we could get an idea as to how much like encroachment that the site plan entails within the buffer and for you to take a very, very preliminary look at where you might put your stormwater basins. Cause I mean, I don't know in the back, if you put 100 foot like buffer on that, I don't, I, you know, this is a half, you know, small size set, but where that 100 foot buffer would be in the back, how close to your septic system? Hard to tell, but-
Yeah, it is. Could it also, I mean, I'm-
I just, I mean, I just don't think you're gonna have, I don't-
It's hard, it's hard to see on this little, on this little map, but it, it's kinda, it also on that southerly, that wetland B area you have labeled, so the wetland B, it looks like the pumps are gonna be in the buffer?
Pitch is this way.
Yeah, I mean, it's- Yeah, I mean, the whole-
It's, I mean, it is a challenging lot. Unfortunately, right.
I don't have an inch, I didn't bring my scale and make-
Do you have a proposed location for a well?
That's, that's the drainage for everything right there.
So one is-
Cause that's gonna have its own requirements and backs from all of this, right?
Yeah, and I'm thinking if you go whole way in the back.
Would you need to cross the wetlands then?
Buffer's gonna be way up here in the back.
But you would also need to, I mean, do the whole thing with the water?
Let's have, let's try to have one, let's have one meeting here, guys, alright?
Maybe that's why it's on the-
Yeah, let's not, we're getting a little too off into tangents here.
Yep, sorry.
So, I mean, I think you gotta do a little more research, I'm, I'm just looking at this in a little more detail now, I'm, I'm realizing what you have here, but-
Here, maybe you wanna bring this up to the board.
Yeah, cause it lo, it just, it looks like on a smaller planet, that wetland, you know, the, the B area is the one that you have the biggest concern with.
I mean, for that, for, you know, the wetland there on the south, yeah, I believe you're right, there's that, you know, pumps-
So, right, with that, with that area being mapped down in here, and board members wanna come over here, but this is- I got 80 feet right here, so from, from where I'm, from where I'm measuring here to this point, that's 80 feet roughly according to scale. From this point here, which is the furthest, closest to the pump, you know, we're bringing ourselves up to here now with the, you know, with the buffer and that's gonna come back, you know, obviously, you know, right here, so the majority of the pumps are in the buffer.
Right, exactly.
Which kinda makes it, it makes it awkward to, you know, especially in the dispensing area now, you know, you, you have a spill within the buffer area, I don't know if that's such a great idea.
I mean, we were concerned on the last, on, you know, the Myers, the Myers Run project where, you know, we were like debating 10-foot like encroachment into the buffer for somebody's backyard, which is grass.
Right, right.
Now we're talking about-
Cause we're worried about the, cause we know from past practice, we knows what, we know what happens, you know, I mean, on the residential end, you know, you, as much as you mark out a wetland buffer, you know, people always, you know, encroach into it. Now, you know, we're, we're arguing with one, one applicant saying, listen, we want you to move your houses, you're a little further away from the buffer, and at the same time you're coming in asking, saying, well, we wanna put our gas pumps wholly in the buffer, you know, it puts, it puts us into, it makes us look like, you know, we're, we're forcing, you know, some to do something and then others not to do something. You know, and again, it's, you know, unfortunately, this is one of those things that, you know, down the road, you know, we're gonna get picked apart, you know, I mean, it's a, you know, there's gonna be 100 questions regarding why we're allowing something to go into a wetland buffer and not protecting the environment, you know, that, that type of thing.
Well, you know, we've taken a very, very, very look at the lot and, you know, I don't know what to do there with it.
No, no, I know, it's, it's a very, yeah, it's a, it's a very tight lot, I mean, I don't know-
That's our issue, it's been undeveloped for a little time and obviously, I'd like to get it back on, use of the tax rules and all that other good stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, if you put in a, you know, I mean, if it was a parking lot, I mean, maybe, I mean, you can get some, you know, you know, some, you know, part of a parking lot maybe in the buffer, but you're, you know, but putting it, you know, putting the dispensing facility right in the middle of it, I think it's hard, I think, I think the board's gonna have a tough time, I'm only, I'm only one person, I'll let everybody else speak on her-
I think we have a tough time with that.
Huh?
We have a tough time with that, yeah.
Again, this is, I, you know, I, I'm not a, a lot of science-
Yeah, I just, I kinda, yeah.
I don't know where this, for this wetland.
Being, being it was a conceptual, I really didn't look at it this weekend prior to the meeting and then again, you know, when you look at, you know, when you look at the parcel access map you gave us, you know, it's only picking up, you know, parcel access only picking up this, this back area. And actually, and actually it's represented, you know, in different, you know, in a different shape than what's actually just here.
Yeah, that's just the proxy, that's just very-
I understand, and again, our consultant said, that's the stage, but this is-
Our, yeah, again, usually what happens with the conceptuals, tonight's the first time that our consultants are looking at it, because they submit it to the board, we look at it, you know, cause we're really not getting too deep into it, I know this is just more or less to get a, a one-on-one with the board to kinda get the feelings for it.
Have you looked at any alternative sites there, around there?
I'm sorry?
Have you looked at any alternative sites here and there?
You know, we have, I mean, this is, this is, it's based on market availability and what works for the tenant and what works for, for, for our use and frankly, you know, they, they, this is the best, you know, site of operation, and that is not something to take lightly, this is the best site, prox, both proximity to the glove that's available, it works for them from a layout standpoint, they wanna be in this automotive hub, if you will, and you got the dealership development there.
Right.
They, you know, they understand that being in a traffic light is nice in certain, certain instances, but here we, we aren't, obviously, we kinda tucked it in on the nine and we said this will have, you know, minimal traffic impact and won't have a lot of turn movements, so we, frankly, we think this is a, a pretty good site, obviously we have this, this wetlands issue, but, you know, I, I think about the, at this point, I'm trying to get creative here again, as you can say, it's not, it's-
I just wanted to bring up a conversation I had with a wetland scientist and he brought up that it's not very valuable wetlands and that it's, it's been filled in over the years, this site, so I don't know if there's any further study that he can do that makes you more comfortable with not having the buffer associated with that, because if you take out that pocket, that isolated one, then I think we have a site here that we can develop with this, this configuration or, you know, mirrored version of it.
Right, I mean, I mean, yeah, I mean, the, yeah, the configuration is one thing, and that you can, you know, you could play around with that and make things move to, to facilitate the traffic through the site, but, yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, no matter what way you, no matter what way you would, where you would alternate this though, you would always be, you know, within that buffer. I mean, it's, it's hard to make, you know, any decision, I mean, without having, I mean, you're saying that you have a wetlands analysis from somebody that's-
He just did the flagging of it, but based on the conversation, he said he can do some more looking at that and just that it wasn't a very-
He would have to do more research into it.
But I don't know that we, and I, I don't know, I don't know our code thoroughly on a wetland, but I don't know if we have like provisions in there for high quality or low quality, we don't, so.
We don't, okay.
It's kinda hard to do.
So it's a, a wetland is a wetland, more or less, is the way the code's written.
The town wetlands are, yeah.
It's just a one-blanket deal?
Right.
Okay, alright.
You get into conversations with DEC, you have conversations about the quality of and, and the impact too, but for the town wetlands.
Yeah, I mean, we have seen that, like, like Malcolm says, you know, with DEC, if they're, if they're like evaluating work, work, work in a buffer, they do take into account high quality, like low quality, but-
But you do have relief that could be sought by an applicant in this instance, one merely of the water, right? I mean, that's, my, my point is basically, and I'm, that committee has not certain attorney, I don't wanna give performers, but my, my thought here, and I'm just again taking advantage of informal here is, is, you know, there is, could there be some justification for that in the board's decision and saying, look, we took a lot, this lot is essentially undevelopable because of this buffer, it's a very low quality buffer, it's obviously able to decide on just making it out here.
I wouldn't say it's undevelopable, I think it's, I think there's, I think in terms of a, I think it's hard-press gas station maybe, only because of-
For this size, I mean-
Because how much, you know, what you're gonna put, you're gonna, you're gonna put the pumps in the buffer, you know, I think that's, I think that's kinda, I mean, it would be, I mean, it might be something, something different or if you can reconfigure and get it away, I mean, I don't know, it's a, I know what you need, you need the circulation.
We need the circulation, and safety is obviously, the safety of the gas, safety for the oil, and safety for cars and-
Right, safety of the vehicles and the people driving through there.
You know, in turn, I know, and I know it's a gas application, but I have history in the area of gas applications though, so I'm connected, but I never-
Yeah, exactly, right.
Yeah, I will, I will just point out, it's, it's a, it's a gas only, it's not a C store, it's, it's not a 24-hour use.
Right.
It's a, frankly, what we consider a pretty low impact, obviously there's gas on the side, I know that.
And one, one thing, just to kinda take in what you were talking about before, it seemed like one of the concerns was that the pumps themselves were in the buffer and then I was listening to Mr. Freino, that the circulation was another concern and if we were to mirror the site, maybe that does, you know, alleviate both of your concerns because the pumps would be further away if it's mirrored and it would be added to the buffer as well. And then maybe we can move the, the storage tanks in a different location as well.
Trying to get creative, we'll certainly do that.
Yeah, I mean, like project for a corner, open up all over. Yeah, yeah, have you looked at that property at all?
Close to BJ's too.
Old Hope, Old Hope Well on Route 9?
Old Hope Well, is that right on the corner?
Yeah, yeah, that's an old, it's an old gas station.
Yeah, no, no, we're, we're very, yeah, I am very-
That would be, that would be an ideal, an ideal situation, cause it'd be a redevelopment.
Yeah, I am, I, I, you know, and it's been a few years, I think I looked at it actually with another client that we work with and I, I believe their pricing expectations are-
There's another property right next door to us that's up too, where Five Star Odo used to be.
Right, I believe, I believe those two properties are being marketed together right now.
They are, they are, I believe there was a proof site at one point on that, like, that could have been like-
On which one, on the-
On the one on the corner there, the, the old gas station, was there, was there an application at that corner, or is that somebody?
Not in recent years, I were-
It was 2001.
Okay.
And they did receive all their variances, but the applicant no longer, it took so many years from the 90s, the applicant, which was Gafflin, walked away, cause they didn't want just a kiosk at that point, they could only get a small vanilla building.
Okay.
So that's-
Yeah, I, I, you know, candidly, you know, economics are important in these deals.
Yeah.
And because BJ's only skew here is gas, they're not selling alcohols and coffee and cigarettes and everything else that really are convenience or profit drivers, we do have to be sensitive, so, you know, this site was a, a great opportunity in the sensitive, check all their boxes, but also the worst from the, from price standpoint, for the price that we're, we're- We do have to be sensitive, so, you know, this site was a, a great opportunity in the sense that we checked all their boxes, uh, but also it works with the, the price definitely, uh, for the price that we're, we're-
Right, right, yeah, it is a wet, yeah, I, I know it is a, it is a wet property, as, as Mr. Maranaccio brought up earlier. You know, and I, I now I remember when the flooding was because that property, it was all flooding out from, there was a heavy rainstorm or whatever they came through and had.
Flooded the whole basement.
Yeah, cause that, and I believe also, um, uh, I believe there was also Stengers property, they also, the, the lower level flooded from that same storm, yeah. Um, so I mean, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a difficult, difficult piece of property.
Understood.
Yeah.
Um, well, we certainly would like to let it go with what we sound like, we do have smaller to do though, um, you know, I guess let us play around, see if we can, uh-
Got to make it fit somehow.
Sorry?
Got to make it fit on that property somehow.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Are you the same company that tried to put one on the BJ's property there?
No, not with BJ, no, BJ's isn't near, uh, Newark, no, we're trying to help them, so they, basically all their clubs have gas associated with the man by forty-six block, they don't, whatever, they can't take gas on the side, whether it's an environmental condition on the side or whether it's another tendency to say, you know, we're chopping, chopping our own gas matter here. Um, so we, when we retain BJ's, basically they wire such that these offices, it's, it's, it's a requirement, they like to offer all of their members gas, so they want to be aware of that.
Yeah. I know there's, there's a couple of us who are familiar from their previous application up on the, uh, you know, of where the site is currently, yeah.
Um, well, thank you, I guess, um, we wanted to try to put some ideas on paper, come back, is that something you could call another sketch agenda or?
I mean, without, if you don't want to get too deep into it, I mean, you could do the same thing as we did tonight, just a conceptual. You know, I mean, you're only going to get just the off-the-cup remarks, there won't be any, any deep research by our consultants, um, or any, you know, comment letters. Uh, the only way that that would happen is it would have to be a full application, uh, and once that's made, then the, the consultants would then, um, have to provide a, you know, review letters for the project.
Yeah.
But if you come back, though, I think you should show, you know, the buffer so it can be-
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
So it can be clearer to the board, but, you know, potential-
And at the, and at the same time, I think that would give opportunity for us to, you know, as the board, just to, you know, to brush up on the wetland buffers themselves and what the requirements are through the town code, because again, we, we, we look at it, a lot of times we rely on the, you know, on the consultants, uh, they're usually outlining the sections and, you know, we're doing our own look at it.
And we could certainly pick up, bring in our consultant next time, maybe there's a story that we can tell that we're missing here.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Alright, so on the, um, we got one more, one more item we need to discuss this evening.
Some conceptual stormwaters, some kind of, I give reference to the size there.
Let me finish talking then.
Alternative, decentralized, centralized, you know, to give us some ideas, we want to be able to do a full review, but I think it'd be useful in this situation, uh, same thing we go for the well too, right, just some idea of where, what you've got in mind.
Alright, so on, um, so as, as we had previously kind of threw a date out there, um, we wanted to hold a workshop meeting, uh, with the consultants, uh, basically to go over, you know, um, different things with the board, uh, that we've, haven't done in a long time. Basically, an overview of the planning board process, um, you know, the secret process, you know, just to, um, basically for some of us that have been on the board for a while, it'd be a refresher. Obviously, for newer members, it gives them a little insight, um, so we can get some presentations by, you know, by the planner, the attorney, engineer into all the different items.
Absolutely.
So we just need to go and somebody needs to make a motion to approve, or to schedule the workshop meeting for August the sixteenth.
And second?
I'm going to look at our calendars first.
That would be the week from, week from Monday, a week from, uh, two weeks from today, sorry. So it would have been normally how we have two meetings a month, in August, we only have one meeting a month, so it'll be the, the third Monday.
Okay, I'm good with that.
August sixteenth?
Yeah.
August the sixteenth. Right, that's the third, third month.
This was a normal month, that would be your normal second meeting every month.
That's why you got it marked, well, August sixteenth, yeah.
Okay. Alright.
So what about the time, do you want to start that at six?
Yeah, we can start earlier, I mean, if you guys are, you guys, everybody be able to make it six o'clock?
Yeah, I'm good.
Here for the pre-meeting, this way.
Yeah, so we'll just start, it's, it's all, it is a workshop just to discuss the, you know, to discuss, um, basically the process so that everybody's on the same page again. And we'll move forward from there.
You're going six o'clock, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, six.
So we'll put an agenda together like we did the last time, you know, working with you guys, but what might be really helpful too, whether you're new like Lynn or you've been here forever, if you, if somebody has questions, they'd like, or areas that you'd like expanded on, if you email me, we'll just make it an agenda item, but whoever, it might be Paul that's going to explain it to you, or Pete, or Malcolm, then those are the things you probably really want to know more about. So it would be helpful to know, to think about those in the next week and a half and get them to us and we can make them agenda items.
Yeah, then we can get a little more detail on specifics.
Keep our presentations from being general and allow us to, to focus in on, on what you care about.
And count that towards our annual training too, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
There you go.
So that helps on that also.
There you go.
Alright, so we said we had a, I don't know, we had a motion, I know.
Marco and Ralph.
Okay, so the motion's made, seconded, so. Okay, all favor?
So six P M, this way, we can put that on the website.
Yeah, okay. So everybody approves that, so we're all good. Okay. Is there anything else that we need to discuss this evening? Well, we've had enough. Alright, so entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, we're done.